This is Jason Anderson, and we are going to call this meeting to order. It is a regular town council meeting. Today is January 11th, 2021. It is currently 7:02 PM. Mr. Wood, would you lead us in prayer?
Heavenly Father, we again ask for wisdom and discernment in the servant's heart as well as we discuss the business of this town. We pray this in your name. Amen.
And we'll now do the pledge of allegiance. After the pledge, I ask that everyone stand for a moment of silence for Mr. Josh Kizik and Mr. Wood, if you would like to say something at that point.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those who may not know, Joshua Cusack was my colleague, one of the paramedics here in town, who recently passed away last Monday. And as I was asked yesterday to say a few words there, I've been asked multiple times over this past week to say a few words, and the only words I keep coming back to, four simple words, "I've lost my friend." Josh was a great coworker, a fantastic supervisor, and a good friend. We worked side by side together as supervisors and shared many laughs as friends. We both worked hard for our people and cared deeply for them. I recall when he had, when I had COVID, he would text me daily, and then about a month later, he caught COVID, and so I returned the kindness. He was my go-to guy for many different things, and yet, we both had something to offer each other, not just in EMS, but his life, in life as well. Whether he'd like to admit it or not, in many ways, Josh was a politician. He would always love to take and call people. You'd see him discussing things with different organizations. Much as he'd make fun of me for being the politician, he was just about the same. But this is just a glimpse of who Josh was, and our relationship with each other, and our people. I think of one memory that I was asked to share that was funny, and one of them was when both of us were working together doing our last standby together at the Thompson Speedway. It got chilly out, and Josh wanted a sweater, and we went to the gift shop, and Josh was saying, "You think we should, can wear this? Because it doesn't say KB, and it doesn't take and have paramedic on it." And I looked at him, I said, "Josh, maybe we should consult the supervisor about this." Of course, we had a good laugh there, and the poor cashier's looking at us, wondering why, and we had to explain to her that we're both supervisors. As I reflect on this past week, though, I just want to say, on behalf of KB Ambulance and myself, we are absolutely humbled by the outpouring of support we have received from our community and beyond. We have always been there for this community in its time of need without thought or reservation. We have never thought we would be in time of need ourselves, but in that, we have been blessed by those who have offered condolences, words of comfort, and support. It means the world to us, and I want to say thank you. I've always been proud of our community here in Killenly, and this past week has given me even more reason to be proud of us, in this great town, this northeast corner, our state, and beyond. I have to say that this is one great American family, and we belong, that we belong to. We are all blessed to be united in service to one another, comforting one each, one another, and loving one each, loving one another. This is what makes America great, and our community reflects that very well. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the ability to speak.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is roll call. For roll call purposes, all council members are either in attendance live or logged in virtually. We have Mr. Whitehead and Ms. Wakefield are remote into this meeting. Next item up on the agenda is adoption of minutes of previous meetings. Can I get a motion to adopt the minutes for 5A organizational town council meeting, December 6th, 2021, and 5B regular town council meeting, December 14th, 2021?
How do you, George, I'll make that motion.
Ray Wood, I'll second.
Motion has been made by Ms. George, seconded by Mr. Wood. Is there discussion or corrections on these minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I found a few errors, I believe. On the organizational meeting, and on item three, the very last sentence, it says, "On the voice vote, Mr. Anderson was unanimously voted Town Council Vice Chairman." I believe he, so, that needs to be corrected. And further along on number six, when we consideration and action on a resolution establishing the place, date, time of the meetings, it has year 2020 and 2021. I believe that should be...
2021, 2022. Or is that actually, that's going to be 2022, 2023?
And then on that same item, Mr. Grandowski made the motion, and it was seconded by Mr. LaPrade. Mr. LaPrade was not in attendance at that meeting. And one more, for the adjournment, Mr. Grandowski made the motion to adjourn, and Mr. Lee seconded it, so, Mr. Lee wasn't here yet.
I wonder if that was somehow carried over, copy and paste from two years ago, from the 2019 organizational meeting. Do we want to...
I can let you know that...
Look who did that right now, so we can make the amendment?
I have it.
Okay, perfect.
So, for adjournment, the, on the organizational meeting, Kevin Cartula made the motion, Ed Grandowski seconded the motion. Then, what was your first correction?
Very first correction was item three on the voice vote. Mr. Anderson was unanimously voted as the Town Council Chairman. I think he made the motion for it, and...
I have, Mr. Wood made the motion.
The last sentence on item five, number three.
Top of page 500.
Yep. That's going to be you, Kevin Cartula.
Mm-hmm.
Elizabeth, I can go over those with you after the meeting.
And also, top of page 501.
Yep. I have those two dates.
Not just the two dates, but below it, it's Mr. Grandowski and Mr. LaPrade on that one.
Oh, yep. And that would be appointing the secretary. The appointment of the secretary was motion made by Ed Grandowski, seconded by Tammy
Any further discussion or corrections? Mr. Whitehead or Ms. Wakefield, do you have any comments on this?
No.
No.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of adopting the minutes as amended, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on on the agenda to presentations, proclamations, and declarations. 6A, Mr. Lee is not in attendance. 6B...
We didn't amend an agenda?
No, I'm going off the, there. Okay, 6A is Killenly School Choice Week proclamation. Whereas all children in Killenly should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas Killenly recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Killenly to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Killenly, and whereas Killenly is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home, and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas Killenly has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective education options. Now therefore, the Killenly Town Council does hereby recognize January 23rd to January 29th, 2022, as Killenly School Choice Week, and we call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut, this 11th day of January 2022. Next item up on the agenda is item 6B, Killenly Teacher of the Year presentation to Mike And I apologize if I mispronounce your name. This is proclamation honoring Mike Morel, Killenly Public School, 2022 Teacher of the Year. Whereas Michael Morel has been an educator with the Killenly Public Schools since 2015. He joined Killenly Public Schools as a long-term substitute, which was the beginning of his second career. Michael comes with years of education and experience that allows his positive influences and leadership to promote his students' success. And whereas, in addition to Michael's responsibilities in the classroom, he coaches girls' basketball, advisor to the Technology Student Association, and most recently, serves as the KIS Student Government and National Junior Honor Society Advisor. He advocates for his students to take leadership roles and develop relationships with their peers that are positive and supportive. And whereas Michael identified a need during the pandemic, he shifted quickly to facilitating meetings with KIS staff for social emotional learning, SEL, to meet the needs of students. It was instrumental in organizing and providing SEL professional developments to KIS staff through the year. Whereas Michael has volunteered boundless hours to renovate and expand outdoor classrooms and trails at Killenly Intermediate School to an oasis that is respected, admired, and enjoyed by the entire school. The outdoor classroom offers the students the ability to be interactive, makes a connection to nature, and offers a hands-on learning approach. They can collect data and learn about the deciduous trees and ecological issues. And now therefore be it proclaimed by the Town Council of the Town of Killenly that Michael Morel be publicly recognized for his exemplary service, extensive experience, and excellent teaching skills, and for the well-earned distinction and respect he has received from his students and peers as a 2022 Killenly Public School Teacher of the Year. And be it further proclaimed that he be commended for his devotion to his students, their families, the school, and the community, presented this 11th day of January 2022 by the Killenly Town Council. Congratulations. Next item up on the agenda is item 6C, proclamation honoring Timothy Milton, Harvard H. Ellis Technical High School, 2022 Teacher of the Year. Whereas Timothy Milton has been an educator for the last 10 years at H.H. Ellis Technical High School, as a graduate of Norwich Technical High School, Mr. Milton has brought skill and positive influences to H.H. Ellis Technical High School from his over 20-year career in the industrial field of precision manufacturing. And whereas, in addition to Mr. Milton's duties as a teacher and his endless hours in his shop, he accepted the role of department head two years ago in the most challenging of years. His commitment and passion for students has never been brighter, including his success in turning his program from low enrollment to one of the most requested programs by students. Mr. Milton supported H.H. Ellis Tech, Technical High School, and QVCC in forming a strong partnership in the development of the QVCC Precision Manufacturing Program. And whereas Mr. Milton has taken his enthusiasm and positivity from the classroom to the basketball courts and the baseball field, coaching students for the last eight years with dedication, heart, and sportsmanship. He also volunteers for school communities and activities such as the senior prom. And whereas Mr. Milton's loyalty and his craft of teaching allows him to encourage and grow his students, building an environment where he not only creates opportunity, but is an ally to their dreams. And now therefore be it proclaimed by the Town Council of the Town of Killenly that Timothy Milton be publicly recognized for his exemplary service, extensive experience, and excellent teaching skills, and for the well-earned distinction and respect he has received from his students and peers as a 2022 Harvard H. Ellis Technical High School Teacher of the Year. And be it further proclaimed that he be commended for his devotion to his students, their families, the school, and the community, presented this 11th day of January 2022 by the Killenly Town Council. Congratulations. Whereas Lori Barrett has served as a dedicated teacher at St. James School since 2002, and whereas Mrs. Barrett has served as a first-grade teacher for the last seven years. She brings imagination, passion, and experience from her earlier teaching years and creates a classroom full of excitement and structure. She utilizes her love of art to ignite her students, and whereas Mrs. Barrett has taken her artistic talents and enthusiasm outside the classroom, offering art workshops, primetime reading nights, and spirituality retreats. She also supports her parish as a lector and enjoys quality time with her husband, children, and grandchildren. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Town Council of the Town of Killenly that Lori Barrett be publicly recognized for exemplary service, extensive experience, and excellent teaching skills, and for the well-earned distinction and respect she has received from her students and peers as a 2022 St. James School Teacher of the Year. And be it further proclaimed that she be commended for her devotion to her students, their families, the school, and the community, presented this 11th day of January 2022 by the Killenly Town Council. We'll now move on on the agenda. Item seven, unfinished business for town meeting action, and I believe we have none. Moving on to item eight, citizen's statement and petition. Pursuant to the Town Council's Rules of Procedure, Article 4, Section 2, all presentations by citizens shall be limited to an aggregate of 45 minutes, and each citizen's presentation shall not exceed five minutes unless otherwise indicated by a majority vote of the Town Council. Public comment can be emailed to publiccomment@killenlyct.gov or mailed to Town of Killenly, 172 Main Street, Killenly, Connecticut, 06239. Honor before the meeting. All written public comment will be received prior, must be received prior to 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. Written public comment will be posted on the town's website, www.kilenlyct.gov. Ms. Colore, could you go over any submitted comments?
Mary Colore, Town Manager, there were seven comments submitted through the email address. The first one is Lydia Rivera Abrams from 45 Mason Hill Road in Dayville, and she is submitting comment in support of appointing Adam Reynolds to the Permanent Building Commission. The next one is Michael Huco, 20 John Street, Danielson, is submitted public comment in support of appointing Adam Reynolds to the Permanent Building Commission. Jessica Payette, no address was listed, submitted comment in support of approving Adam Reynolds for the Permanent Building Commission. Jennifer Horner, no address was submitted, submitted comment in support of Adam Reynolds to the Permanent Building Commission. Terry Barton, 655 Chestnut Hill Road in Dayville, submitted public comment in support of approving Adam Reynolds for the Permanent Building Commission. Jeremy Grethier submitted public comment, no address identified, and submitted public comment in support of Adam Reynolds for the position on Permanent Building Commission. The last one was received from Kathy Fedor of 107 Primrose Crossing in Dayville, and she submitted comments and questions with regards to the Killenly Public Library and the discussion that was presented during manager's comments at last session, last meeting. That was all submitted written public comment.
Thank you. To the public, I do encourage you, if you are submitting written comment, to please include your address, as the council can then determine how much your opinion would be weighed in on certain items. As we ask people, when they come forward during public comment to speak, we ask them to state their name and address, so that way the council members are aware to where the speaker's coming from. Also, I had received some feedback as to why we allowed certain people who lived out of town to speak during public comment period. I looked through the town charter, I looked through the Town Council Rules of Procedure, and today I conferred with the town manager that irregardless of where you live, you're allowed to speak during public comment period, and as I stated, we do ask what your name and address is, so we can take that into consideration as we are considering the comments that are made. Also, if you do submit public comment, written public comment, and you do, you can still come in person to speak, if you do, we just ask you to wait until all those who had not submitted written public comment speak first, as we would in a situation where someone speaks, and then they come up, they want to speak again after their time's allotted time, we ask them to wait as well until the rest of the public has had a chance to speak. At this time, we will open up for public comments. If there is anyone who has public comment, please step to the microphone at the podium, state your name and address.
Lynn LaBurge, 2080 Franklin Street. Question I have is, I understand, you know, about the library fines and wanting to stop them, but what is going to be done if a book isn't returned at all? Will people still be billed for that book, or how will it be replaced? Is that going to come out of the town's pocketbook?
Is there any further public comment? Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on on the agenda. Next item up is council and staff comments. Ms. Colore, I know we had received a comment regarding the library fines issue, as was brought up again tonight. Can you just speak to what Ms. LaBurge just said?
Sure, so I'll speak to what Ms. LaBurge's comment is, as well as Mrs. Fedor's comments or questions. We're still in the process of developing what the policy will be, so that policy, once developed, will be brought forward to the Town Council for the council to consider and receive comment on, so that will be brought, and I'm sure will be part, is going to be part of a regular agenda item. Last month's discussion was really brought about by my comments, and just making them aware of a article that was written recently in the Norwich Bulletin about an evaluation that was done more regionally, including some of the large cities like New York and Boston, around whether or not libraries wanted to continue to utilize fines and fees, or utilize the fee, the fine structure, and to let the council know that the town was, the town staff was evaluating that. So, we haven't determined or set any new policies, we haven't changed our existing policies as of yet. That will be hopefully brought to the Town Council, likely in their fiscal subcommittee, and then ultimately to the Town Council in the upcoming next couple of months before we hit budget season, and hopefully we'll have some more details on exactly what, what steps is the town going to take, should the material be completely, you know, unrecoverable from the individual versus just late fines? So, we are still working on that structure, and I hope that that does answer some of the questions. Mrs. Fedor had asked a few additional questions, which I can respond to her via email.
Thank you. I do have one quick question, or a response to it. Seeing how the study, as you said, addressed, looked at bigger cities and how they're handling the situation, my question would be, the bigger cities that they studied, what percentage of their funding comes from private donation, what percentage comes from public funding? Just so we have kind of an apples-to-apples comparison, because if bigger cities are receiving a lot of private funding, is it always the best scenario to mimic what the bigger city is doing?
And that's always a good, you know, an area that we want to evaluate. I will say that our public library does have private funding as well. We have enough, our public library's fortunate to have a number of trusts, and as of the last six or seven years, the bulk of all books are purchased through those trust funds and not purchased through operating funds. That got shifted a number of years ago. But one of the trends, what they really look at is whether, not necessarily where the funding is, but the trends in how is fines a deterrent for people or a way for libraries to recover the material? Do people bring back the material in, in order to avoid getting fines or to stop late fees from accruing? And what most of the towns and cities that have evaluated this have determined that the fine structure really doesn't stop people from being late, and it doesn't stop people that aren't going to bring the material back, they just don't bring it back. So, and there are other, you know, different policies that others have put in place when, you know, a material is not returned to the library at all, and it becomes a willful neglect on the individual that has a library card, and how the library manages that. So, you know, we want to look at what those trends are. Clearly, you know, percentages of funding are going to be, you know, something that we look at as well, but know that our, so, a lot of locally, many people may think that our library is 100% funded straight by general government operating funds, and that's not the case. There is trust fund, funding that the, that the library does utilize on an annual basis.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments? Ms. Wakefield or Mr. Whitehead? Any comments from either of you?
Yes, I'd like to reach out to Mrs. Fedor. If she would like to contact me, she did mention me in her comment, I wouldn't mind discussing that further with her, because I spent some time today in reading some of the articles online, and I would definitely like to just expound on that with her, if she, if she wants to, and I'm sure my contact information is on the website, she can call me anytime. But I do have some questions for her, and I'd imagine she has some questions for me.
Thank you very much. Ms. Fedor, if she, if you're watching online or listening to this, the, all our town council members, our contact phone numbers are on the town's website, as well as our email addresses... our contact phone numbers are on the town's website, as well as our email addresses, and that goes for any members of the public, if you want to reach out to your council members. You do have the opportunity two different ways. You can reach us via email, you can also reach us through phone. Ms. Wakefield, did you have any comments?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing no further comments, we'll move on in the agenda. The next item up is reports from liaisons, or excuse me, no, appointments to boards and commissions. Oh yeah, trying to get it over. Item 10A, Brian Card is seeking reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a The term would run from January 2022 to December of 2024, a three-year term. Mr. Card has been a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission as a regular member since 2008, and prior to that, an alternate member for two years. His attendance has been steady over the course of his appointment. The Planning and Zoning Commission is a commission with five regular members and three alternate members, including Mr. Card. All five regular member seats are filled, there are three alternate member vacancies Would someone like to make a motion to reappoint Mr. Card to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Ray Wood, I'll make that motion.
Patty George, I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mrs. George. I will open up for discussion. I will say, in the Planning and Zoning meetings I've been to, Brian is always very involved, very thorough and very knowledgeable. He does a phenomenal job on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I can say without a doubt, he is definitely an asset to this community, and I would fully endorse his reappointment as a regular member. Mr. Grandalsky.
I concur with your comments.
Thank you. Ms. Barclay?
I'm the new liaison to the Planning and Zoning. I've attended two meetings, and I agree with continuity. Planning and zoning is very time-consuming, and these individuals are very knowledgeable of all the laws, and it's a lot of work, so I also support him.
Thank you. Any comments from Ms. Wakefield or Mr. Whitehead?
No.
Not at this time.
Seeing no further comments, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to item 10B.
If I may, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
There's a correction to the agenda for item 10B. Verga is looking for reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. That is an error, it was a typographical error. So the rear, the, the background, the backup documents all reflected appropriately with Planning and Zoning Commission. It's just written wrong on the agenda. My apologies for that error.
Thank you for clarifying that. Virgil Lorenz is seeking reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a regular member. The term would run from January 2022 through December 2024, a three-year term. Ms. Lorenz has been a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission as a regular member for many years. She was a member for over a decade in the 80s and 90s, and came back to the commission in 2015. Her attendance has been steady over the course of her appointment. The Planning and Zoning Commission is a commission with five regular members and three alternate members, including Ms. Lorenz. All five regular member seats are filled, there are three alternate member vacancies available. Can I get a motion to reappoint Ms. Lorenz?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Ms. Lorenz.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made by Mr. Cattula, seconded by Mrs. Barclay. I will open up for comments. I will say, very similar to Brian Card, when I've been at the Planning and Zoning meetings, Verga does a phenomenal job. One of the things that I've really been impressed with is how dedicated she is to make sure that all the applicants abide by lighting rules and dark sky regulations to help protect against light pollution. It's not something you hear about a lot, but as I stated during her interview last week, coming from someone who loves looking at the sky and astronomy, and now recently astrophotography, I've started looking, looking at, and definitely does a phenomenal job when she's on there, and appreciate the dedication she has to the community. Any comments from Ms. Barclay?
I also agree with your comments, and she's looking out for the best interests of the town in growth, and also in maintaining the beauty of the town.
Mr. Wood?
I have to say, that is one thing I'm impressed with there, you know, I grew up in South Killingley, and we don't have all the things that we have here in the borough with lighting and stuff like that, so it was always nice to be able to go home and be able to look up and actually see the skylight, the sky and everything like that. It's actually nice to have a member, I mean, all these guys do a phenomenal job, but it's nice to have a member who thinks about these things there, and, you know, keeps that in everybody's forefront in their mind as well, so I'm definitely impressed with that.
Thank you. One, Mr. Grandalsky, please.
Yeah, I think she's, you know, she's in there, she's well familiarized with all the tools, the regulations and whatnot, and she takes every concern, so she's working out for the best interest of the town. And approve of real.
Thank you. I would just like to add, the fact I live as close as I do to the industrial park, and at nighttime I can still look out and see the stars, says a lot to the fact that planning and zoning has definitely made applicants adhere to regulations and guidelines. Any further comments? Anything from Ms. Wakefield or Mr. Whitehead?
No, sir.
Thank you. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on in the agenda. The next item up is 10C. Byron Martin is seeking reappointment to the Agriculture Commission as a regular member. The term would run from November 2021 through October 2024, a three-year term. Mr. Martin has been a member of the Agriculture Commission as a regular member since November 2012. His attendance has been steady over the course of his appointment. The Agriculture Commission is a commission with five regular members and three alternate members, including Mr. Martin. Four regular member seats are filled, there is one regular member and one alternate member vacancy available. Can I get a motion to reappoint Mr. Martin?
Ray Wood, I'll make the motion.
Patty George, I'll second.
Motion was made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Grandalsky. I will open up for comments.
I like what he does with the B classes that he has. He does a lot of work to put those together, and he has a very good turnout for those, and I commend him for that, and I'd like to see him keep doing that if possible.
Thank you. Mr. Grandalsky.
Well, as he said during his interview, it's a small portion of the community, but we'd like to keep the agriculture going, and his business, he has a unique business over there. It's, you know, and to take the time off from that and put, you know, come into here, you know, take on the B class and everything else, I've got to commend him with that. All of these people are important to the town. I, I, looking, I, proof is really quite good.
Thank you. Any further comments? Mrs. George?
Being the ag liaison for the two years working with Byron, like Ed said, as busy as he is with Logies, he puts his all into ag. He's always looking to try and grow it, bring in new members, and he does a really good job.
Thank you. Any comments from Ms. Wakefield or Mr. Whitehead?
No, sir.
No.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor of reappointing Mr. Martin, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on in the agenda, to item 10D. Patrick McLaughlin is seeking appointment to the Water Pollution Control Authority as a regular member. The term would run from November 2021 through October 2024, a three-year term. Mr. McLaughlin has been a member of the Water Pollution Control Authority as a regular member since January 2024. Mr. McLaughlin's attendance, ah, we have an error in here. Okay. Okay, that was, I was looking at the 24 before that. Mr. McLaughlin has been a member of the Water Pollution Control Authority as a regular member since January 2004. Mr. McLaughlin's attendance has been steady over the course of his appointment. The Water Pollution Control Authority is an authority with five regular members and two alternate members. Currently, there are three active regular members, including Mr. McLaughlin. Two regular member and two alternate member seats are vacant. Can I get a motion to reappoint Mr. McLaughlin?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandalsky, seconded by Mr. Wood. I will open up for comments. Mr. Grandalsky?
I think Pat does a real good job. He's got a lot of experience, as he said in his interview, he was, he was a town engineer many years ago, then he moved on to something else, but then he came back and, you know, staying on, this is, this is an area that he has a lot of expertise in, we've done a lot of work down there, the $25 million pension project of the facility and all of that, so he's a good member to have onboard.
Thank you, I agree. The times I filled in as liaison to the WPCA, and also times that I just sat in, other times when you were there and I sat in on meetings, he always seemed to do a phenomenal Any further comments? Mr. Wood?
Just kind of to echo a little bit of what you've said there, I believe if I remember right, he said that the whole, everything that they've just got through doing, he started that process a long time ago, and to see that through and dedicated, being this dedicated to our town is very commendable, and definitely can approve someone who has this kind of devotion to the town of Killingley.
Thank you. Any comments from Ms. Wakefield or Mr. Whitehead?
No.
Sir.
Seeing no further comments, all those in favor of reappointing Mr. McLaughlin, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to item 10E. Thomas Weaver is seeking reappointment to the Permanent Building Commission as a regular member. The term would run from December 15, 2021, through December 16, 2025, a four-year term. Mr. Weaver has been a member of the Permanent Building Commission since 1995. His attendance has been steady over the course of his 26 years on the commission. The Permanent Building Commission is a commission with five regular members and two alternate members. Currently, there are five active regular members, including Mr. Weaver, and two alternate member seat vacancies. Can I get a motion to appoint Mr., reappoint Mr. Weaver?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Cattula, seconded by Mr. Grandalsky. I will open up for comments. Mr. Cattula?
Being the liaison to that board and seeing how that board works and gets to along in with the experience that's on that board, and the way Mr. Weaver handles the meetings there, I'm more in favor of endorsing him for that, back to that commission.
Thank you. Mr. Grandalsky?
He's got a lot of experience, you know, continuity and whatnot. He's chair, he's done a real good job keeping things going, so I'm in favor of reappointing.
Thank you. Any further comments? Ms. Wakefield or Mr. Whitehead, any comments?
No.
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor of reappointing Mr. Weaver, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next item up on the agenda is 10F. Vance Carter is seeking appointment to the Board of Recreation as a regular member. There are currently two regular member vacancies with a term of two years, in which both terms run from January 1, 2022, through December 31 of 2023. Mr. Vance is interested in being appointed as a regular member of the Board of Rec. Can I get a motion to appoint Mr. Carter to the Board of Rec?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandalsky, seconded by Mr. Wood. I will open up for comments.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Ms. Wakefield.
So I, I think this candidate, along with the next one, which I'll speak, I can say when he gets up there, it, the Board of Rec is a very active commission, and it's, it's good to see people that, that have decided, you know, I believe, if I remember correctly, they both had recently retired and have extra time. I think they're going to find that the Recreation Commission and the Recreation Department has a lot to offer, and I, I think both of them have a lot of energy, and I think they'll bring some new blood and new ideas to, to the Rec Department.
Thank you. Mr. Grandalsky?
Yeah, I've talked to Vance from time to time, you know, looking, requesting him to look into various commissions, and finally he put his name in, and I had to applaud for that, and I saw him tonight, and I says, "Well, you're going to be on our agenda tonight." So, he says, "Well, he can't make it because he has to work." You know, in his interview the other day, you know, he was a runner, and he was acting, he was a coach, so he's into this, and I think it's, it's going to be good for him.
Thank you. Any further comments? Mr. Whitehead?
No, sir.
Any comments?
No, sir.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor of appointing Mr. Carter to the Board of Rec, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to agenda item 10G. Kevin Mahan, appointment to the Board of Rec as a regular member. Again, there are currently two, there are currently one regular member vacancies, since we just filled one. It has a term of two years, and that will run from January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2023. Mr. Mahan is interested in being appointed as a regular member of the Board of Rec. Can I get a motion to appoint Mr. Mahan to the Board of Rec?
I'll make that motion.
Patty George, I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Cattula, seconded by Mrs. George. Discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So I, like I said previously, both of those candidates, when we interviewed them last week, they both had a lot of, a lot of energy and a lot of great ideas, and, and I look forward to, because as the liaison and having worked with the Rec Department for many years, even as, even when I was in the liaison, I, I look forward to working with, with some people that are going to bring some new energy and new life and new ideas, and, you know, just help us to expand activities for the, for the citizens in Killingley.
Thank you. I agree. Is there any other further comment from council? Mr. Whitehead?
No, sir.
Thank you. Seeing none, all those in favor of appointing Mr. Mahan to the Board of Rec, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on in the agenda. The next item up on the agenda is a item 10H. Adam Reynolds seeking appointment to the Permanent Building Commission as an alternate There are currently two alternate member vacancies with a term of four years that would run from December 16, 2020, through December 16 of 2024. Mr. Reynolds is interested in being appointed as an alternate member of the Permanent Building Commission. Can I get someone to make a motion to appoint Mr. Reynolds to the Permanent Building Commission?
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandalsky. Motion has been seconded by Mrs. Murphy. I will open up for discussion. Mr. Grandalsky?
Well, as a, being an electrician, I think he would bring a lot to the table. You know, we need a different set of eyes, as was said when the Permanent Building Commission members were on a few months ago, they're getting older, and they've been on it for a while, and someone would like to see some new blood come on, and I think he would be a good addition. As far as the interview and the comments, the public comments last week, there was a lot of comments about one particular small issue that the, it, it was just one issue about, you know, labor unions and, and projects in town, but the permanent- But the Permanent Building Commission is much more than that. Uh, they, they have to take on the whole project. And, um, I, I think, uh, you know, he, he, he made a comment that, you know, um, project labor agreements have to be worded in a way that is in the best interest of the town. And I think when the union people came in, they just looked at the point that he was totally against unions working in town. And I don't think that is true.
Thank you. Is there any other further comment? Mr. Cottula?
I know, Mr. Reynolds, some of his activities or actions at some of the meetings have been, been, uh, a little out of line to Robert's Rules of Orders and how he conducts himself at the meeting. To be put on one of these boards, I think it might give him some more experience and how, and get a little more involved. And then be able to see how things function and things, how things go. But I don't know if I've ever seen anybody commit for an appointment that has had as much, uh, interest or, uh, public comment about some for, some against. Uh, so it's, uh, makes you wonder why there's so much of a controversy, but such interest in one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further comment? Ms. Murphy?
Uh, I was just gonna say that I really appreciate all the public comment. I really appreciate all the people that came. I really appreciate all the people that wrote me. We don't always know everything that's going on there. And I think the communication is very important and I welcome it. And I encourage people, please, keep reaching out to us so that we can hear your input. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Mrs. George?
So, we've gotten information pro and con. And I think it's important to realize when you're serving the public, it's a humbling experience. I think it would be a good idea for him to serve on this commission because a lot of the, um, like walking out of a meeting like this, things like that, and not understanding the difference between a regular and a special. You'll learn all those different nuances. And working with a board that's so seasoned, professional and experienced, you'll learn more to listen than speak before you're actually aware of everything going on. So I think it's a good idea to put him on a board. It's an alternate position, so he'll have time to learn the ins and outs.
Thank you. Any further comments? Mr. Wood?
I, I do agree. Everybody's, everybody has a learning curve there, you know? We, we all are new ones, I know, for, uh, you, Michelle, and you, Andy, you're, you're both new, you're still learning. And we're still learning too, and Mary's great at correcting us. Um, and, uh, you know, there, there's definitely a, a learning curve to be had. I just, I'm still kind of, unfortunately, I, I, I am still on the fence. I'm not against Mr. Reynolds by any means. Um, but, uh, I think I've been given a lot to think about on both sides of it, which continues to leave me on the fence about everything. Um, so, uh, nothing, nothing by any means personal against him there. It's just, uh, I've had, I've heard good and bad and kind of leaves me of where do I really need to look? Uh, and I'm kind of in the middle, if you will.
Thank you. Ms. Wakefield or Mr. Whitehead, do you have any comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Wood. Whitehead?
I believe if you wanna be on one of these boards or commissions, you really have to have an open mind. And it's not about your feelings, it's about what's good for the town. And I think if you're, 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 Adam, I think you're just so strong against unions or PLAs. I thi- I think you can't, you can't go into this with such a strong mind. You have to have an open mind. You have to see what's gonna benefit the town completely. And that, that leaves me kind of wish-washy on this, on this decision as well. Because you're so strong and set, I, I guess, set in your way about this project labor agreement. And I agree with Mr. Grandalsky that, you know, that's, that's a small portion. But if that's, if that's parlayed through the rest of the, your decision-making, that could, that could be a problem. Just my opinion. I think your energy level is fantastic. But I just, I, I believe you gotta, you, you have to step away from your personal feelings and you really have to. Yeah, the town has to be the, the most important decision.
Thank you.
The, the town's interests, my apologies.
Thank you. Ms. Wakefield?
Uh, so, so I have to agree with a couple of the other comments. I believe Mr. Cottula had talked about, um, how much experience is actually currently on the Permanent, um, Building Commission. Um, a lot of those, um, individuals have been in the trades for, they probably won't want to admit how many years they've been in the trades. But they're very experienced and they're very versed in how a meeting runs. Um, I, I agree with, with, uh, Ms. Laro, um, in that, um, the, there's a learning, learning, there's an ability, there's gonna be a learning curve. But there's the fact that it's an alternate position. It's not a voting position unless they don't have a quorum, which currently they're, you know, they would have to lose a lot of members in order for them to need, need that alternate to vote. So, I think it would give him an oppo- Mr. Reynolds an opportunity. Um, the fact that he's in the trades, he understands the trades. Um, I think that, that's a plus for him and it would help qualify him to, to sit on this particular commission. Um, I, I think in years past, we've had a lot of candidates come forward that, that are very qualified and applying for, for boards and commissions and, and that relate back to what they do for their profession, which is a benefit for the town. Um, I will agree with Mr. Whitehead in that, uh, Mr. Reynolds does have a lot of energy. I mean, I know he's involved with, with the, with the scouts currently. And, um, he's looking to get involved in town. Um, I think we should always try to encourage, um, people to be involved because there, there are a lot of towns that are, that have a lot more boards and commissions with a lot more empty spots than we have. Um, so I, I think this is a good, good place and it's a good fit. I think he's gonna have a lot of good mentors that are already currently on that Permanent Building Commission, um, that will help guide him and, and how meetings are run and, and, you know, learning, learning how, how you have to, have to stop and think sometimes before you, you say or put anything in writing because it will come back and, and, and people will call you on it. Um, because, um, I've been stopped over the years in grocery stores by people for decisions the council's made. Uh, might not have been the way I voted, but they, they stopped me anyways. So, um, we live in a small town and everybody knows who you are and, um, and you're not always gonna make everybody happy. So, um, I think, I think, um, the fact that he's willing to come forward and, and put himself in a position to volunteer for the town is good. Um, and I think the posi- this particular position would be a good one for him to learn how, how meetings are run and, and how the system works. So, that's what I think.
Thank you. Ms. Barkley?
I agree with both sides of the comments, um, especially, um, learning to be respectful of people that you're talking to.
Thank you. Um, since everybody else has already commented, I have been reserving my comments for last. One item I wanna address was comments made by Ms. Wakefield as far as, um, there would have to be a lot of members not show up to be an issue, be a, uh, opportunity if Minister Reynolds is appointed for him to vote. Uh, my conversation with Ms. Calorio last week, and you can just verify, back me up on this. I believe you said the last Permanent Building Commission meeting, they were barely able to, uh, reach a quorum to be able to have the meeting.
That happened at their meeting with regards to appointing the, um, or interviewing, I should say, the architects. Um, that doesn't happen at every meeting. Um, but it, it does happen. And when you have a very active commission, like the Permanent Building Commission and, um, large capital projects that are underway, that will probably need to meet more frequently than once a month, um, people schedule sometimes conflict. And so it's possible that they would be, you know, um, uh, you know, having, uh, a, a regular member absent or, or whatnot. But it has happened with that, as it's happened with many commissions.
I'll add one more. That was a Saturday morning meeting. Um, all the meetings that are during the, scheduled meetings during the week are, uh, they're always, haven't had a problem with a quorum during the week.
Thank you. Um, there are a few other things I wanna touch on upon this. Um, we did hear a lot of pros and cons, um, people for, people against Mr. Reynolds. One, one concern I had, and it was the reason why I brought up the question last week and gave Mr. Reynolds the opportunity to explain his comments, were back in September. Um, and, and I will quote his comments, are we, are we going to touch a PLA again? Were we gonna basically cut the knees off of a good portion of people who can bid on a project? Then during his interview last week, he said, I'm not against PLAs, I'm all for PLAs. Um, for someone to go back and forth on positions on something like that does raise concerns to me. Um, I just wanted to give him the opportunity to clarify his comments last week, um, which is why I brought that question forward. Since then, there's been a lot of comments on social media that my, asking him to clarify his comment was politically motivated on my part. I just wanna clarify with one hundred percent certainty that is not the fact. If I were to decide by my political position and be politically motivated on voting for boards and commissions, two years ago, when someone ran directly against me, who was my opponent, running for town council, when he came forward the month after I was sworn in again, applying for the Planning and Zoning Commission, why would I have voted for him and not against him if I'm making my decisions on appointments to boards and commissions based off political motivation? I am, I have never questioned Mr. Reynolds' ability and his expertise in the electrical field, nor will I ever. My concerns are based off of his actions. For those who don't know what is going on, I will bring this out to the public's attention. Back in September, during a special town council meeting, um, I had opened up for public comment. Mr. Reynolds was walking up to the podium. I clarified with him that public comment at a special meeting is related to the, the items on the agenda. And there was only one item on the agenda that night, which was the reappointment of a member to the Board of Rec. Mr. Reynolds still came up to the podium after my direction, after my guidance on the rules of procedure for that meeting, and still spoke to the community center project. After the meeting, I spoke with him and just let him know, it wasn't that I didn't wanna listen to what you had to say. It was a matter of, we're following rules of procedure. During the meeting, I had also told him that he could come back the following week with his public comment to the regular town council meeting, which he did. However, after the meeting, Mr. Reynolds had posted on Facebook saying that I, that the town council cut him off and did not allow him to speak. The next month, in October, the town council recognized October as National Bully Prevent- Bully Prevention Month. Later on during that meeting, after Mr. Reynolds had already made public comment, when the meeting had moved on to council and staff comments, council members were speaking. In the middle of Mr. Reynolds' opponent for town council seat, she was speaking and Mr. Reynolds interrupted her. Outside of public comment, period. Again, not following rules. My concerns aren't over his ability to, hi- his knowledge that could be valuable to this commission. My concerns are over his attitude and his actions. And what seems to be a unwillingness to follow rules and procedures. That kind of actions and attitudes, I feel there's no place for in a commission. That being said, I will address one other thing. Mr. Cottula had spoke that he couldn't remember any other candidate coming forward for a board or commission that created, in a sense, this much of a stir. I actually remember such time. It was two thousand and eighteen. I had recently been elected to the council for the first time. After a candidate interviewed for an alternate position on planning and zoning, I had three council members lobby me to vote against him. Not because of his qualifications, but because of what his positions were. And that they did not feel he was a fit for the commission. Of those three council members, one of them is still sitting with us right now, Mr. Grandalsky. That member of the community wanted to serve on a board and a commission, planning and zoning. He actually interviewed twice. He interviewed in two thousand and eighteen. He also interviewed in two thousand and twenty. Two thousand and twenty, he was appointed. Both times when he came up for appointment, Mr. Grandalsky wouldn't vote for him. So there is precedent where council members in the past have chose not to vote for someone for a board of commission, not because of experience, but because they feel they wouldn't be a good fit for the commission. That being said, I have nothing further. If anyone else would like to speak? Mr. Grandalsky?
I take exception that I lobbied you for that person. I have never, ever lobbied a council member. You may be have taken the wrong, but I've never lobbied. Maybe I could say in a conversation that I may not agree, that you may know where I'm going and during our conversation, but I never specifically lobbied any member of the council at any time. I'm very careful about that. And I do not like that type of a comment. I am offended.
Mr. Grandalsky, I'm sorry you're offended. But your comment to me was, he's not a good fit. You would approach me after the meeting and said, he's not a good fit. As well as two other council members, who were definitely more elaborate on why they felt he wasn't a good fit. But I remember it specifically because it was the only time, up until that point, anyone, I'd ever heard of anyone taking a position against someone running for a commission.
But I take offense at you saying that I lobbied you, which I did not. That's pushing the limit. That's way out there. So what you're saying, you know, specifically come to you, which I didn't do, if I'm having a conversation with somebody, that is not lobbying a person. There's a difference. Maybe I expressed my concern early on. Okay, here's what's going on. Here's my feeling. I have a right to do that. But for someone to tell me that I lobbied them, no.
Is there any further comment? Ms. Murphy?
Kind of a clarification question. Uh, with PLAs, non-union can bid on them. So that was a misunderstanding, right? Uh, union and non-union can bid in a PLA?
Depends on how the PLA is written. Sometimes they're set aside within a PLA for non-union locals, um, for them to also be able to bid. So it's, depends on the structure of the PLA.
Who writes our PLAs? Is it the commission?
So, in the, um, KMS project, we have the PLA- So in the KMS project, we have the PLA to be written with approval by the Permanent Building Commission, but written by the construction manager at risk, because they'll be the one that we contracting with all of the vendors, with all of the subcontractors, and the Permanent Building Commission will approve that. The Permanent Building Commission typically is the one that approves the structure of the PLA.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
So we have five for, two against, and two abstentions. Motion carries. We'll now move on to the agenda. The next item up on the agenda is 11, reports from liaisons, 11A, Board of Ed liaison. Mr. Farron, if you could come forward, please.
Hi, everybody.
Hello. It's great to have a liaison from the Board of Ed.
So as you can tell, I'm the new liaison for the, for the town council from the Board of Ed. I just had a few highlights from our last BOE meeting. I didn't want to have this go too long. I'm trying to gear, you know, how long my comments should be, so I don't take up too much of, of your meeting time, but I hit the highlights of what's going on. So we had two members that did not run for reelection, and we have two new members, Kelly Martin and Susan Lannan. And the members that did run for reelection were reelected. Mr. Farrell elected not to run for chair this time. So Ms. Jolly was appointed as the board chair. I was appointed vice chair. Let's see. Public comments, just a few highlights from there. There were some concern from town residents about the effects that masks are having on the students in the schools. And I don't know if you're aware, but the, one of the, one of the residents, Mr. Scott Heat, had a testing unit, and he found that the carbon monoxide levels in this room were already above federal guidelines. Did you find that to be correct?
That's inaccurate.
Okay.
I did check with our fire marshal. There must have been something wrong with his meter. I don't believe that he calibrated it appropriately.
Okay, well, that's good news.
The levels that he was displaying on that meter would have meant that we would all have been unconscious.
Okay. Yeah, there was, it seemed to be a little bit of concern, but anyway, I'm glad that's straightened out. Oh, there were a couple of issues in the schools that we're looking to address. Mrs. Grandalsky pointed out that the camera system at KIS is not working in parts of the building. And so we're looking to get that addressed as soon as possible. Our student board member, Reanne Martin, pointed out that the PA system cannot be heard in all the bathrooms at the high school. And so, you know, when, when emergency codes are called, students that might happen to be in the bathroom at the time might not even be aware of what's going on. So that's also a concern. We had the school resource officer come to the meeting and address, you know, some safety concerns. He explained the code yellow and the code red calls in the, in the schools, and what they represent, because there had been a little confusion as to which was which, and there was an improper code called at one point. So I think everybody's on board as to what is, excuse me, what is what at this point. Of course, the good news on the football team, winning their recent state championship, which was a pretty awesome accomplishment. And also, this is from the student board members, by the way, and they also thanked the Big Red Marching Band for their amazing support, and also the cheerleaders for their support this season. Fabulous conclusion to the, to the year. And one controversial point was the repair to the elevator at Westfield Avenue. That was explained by Ms. Calorio as to, you know, how that funding was set up to be done, and it all made perfect sense. We were just concerned with the optics of that. And we did approve the upgrades and the repair to that elevator. Ms. Clark reported that there are no items of concern as far as the November monthly financial report. So that was good news. We're on track there so far. The robotics trip to Japan was postponed due to travel limitations. And great news on the transportation front, the ongoing issues with not being able to fill all the, or man all the bus routes has, at least for now, been alleviated. And we also have new staff that are being trained and will be on the road soon. We got a COVID update from the superintendent, Mr. Angeli, and he explained why Killenley was not able to adopt the screen and stay option because of the, the measured levels of COVID infections going on and the quarantines. So, you know, we're hoping to get to that point, to get to that level at some point, but right now, the numbers didn't reflect being able to, to do that. We adopted the new, the 2022 to 2023 district calendar. And we also approved the paraprofessional union agreement, had been in contention for, for a little longer than everybody would have liked. And that's it. I don't know if there's any questions, but that's all I have for now.
Thank you very much. I will open up to council. Any questions, comments? Mr. Grandalsky.
With regard, I'm glad to see you're using the non-lapsing account to fix the elevator. That's, that's the purpose for what that was put in. But maybe can we be more aggressive in using the non-lapsing account? I mean, this would be a nice thing. This is setting the precedent. We're starting to look at, at using it with the new people and whatnot. We haven't used it quite to the same extent before. But I think, I, I like that. I think that's a good place for it. And that's what the non-lapsing account for. But we also have sufficient funds in there. And if, I'm looking at some of the year, year ends where the Board of Education is putting money, and it goes back into our general fund, if we could be spending items within the non-lapsing account, so you can recur some of that back. Because once it gets back into the general fund, it's a tough way to go back. With the non-lapsing account, it's easy for you guys to access it.
Right.
So just to be nice of, we can find other projects. And maybe it might take a few years to get them going, but, you know, I mean, it may not be in one particular year, but it may take a little more time, and then we can be using this account to its fullest extent.
Right. I, I personally agree with that, with your opinion on that. And I think it's a goal that we need to do. There, there is concern from some members that, I don't want to use the term slush fund, because it's obviously not a slush fund, but they don't want too many items to be put into that. And we, they don't want us to be relying on it as, too much. I don't know if that's a valid concern or not, but that has been brought up. You know, in, in other words, it might encourage a little bit of extra spending, which we don't want to get into. But I, I agree with you that that's a good place for a lot of these funds to come from, because, you know, rather than return it to the general fund and then go to the town later for money for a project that could have been funded with that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I, I go along with that.
Because in some years, you're putting so much money back that, but if you're not using the non-lapsing account, I, I don't want to call it a slush fund. I'm not going, you know?
Right.
I mean, it is there, it's there to bail you guys out. If you have to come to a supplemental appropriation to the council, I've been through that. I do not want to go through that again. That really is a problem. It really killed us in, in the bond readings and everything else. So, but this is a good, a good move here. I agree with this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
First off, it's fantastic to finally have a liaison here. And I gotta say, Norm, I'm always, it's always a pleasure to see you, and of course, your lovely wife as well. Because just to, you know, first aside there with the, sorry, it's been a very long week there. Just with the school buses there, you know, I, I know you guys as the board, our superintendent, has taken a lot of flak over what has happened. When I drive around town and I see help wanted signs almost for every industry possible, everybody's struggling. So I'm glad to hear there's progress going on with that. And I really wish you guys well with, with all of that. And obviously, you're going in the right direction. I know with, in regards to what I've been seeing on the news lately, there's been schools that have had to go to remote learning and/or half-days or things like that due to staffing issues, due to COVID. Has Killenley seen it? I, I don't think I've seen anything about Killenley. Has that been a concern that's been brought up by the superintendent at all recently to you all, or?
Well, there have been staffing issues due to quarantines, but by and large, we've been doing fairly well on that front as far as the in-person learning. And, and the state is not allowing remote learning at this time anyway. So we'd have to apply for a special exemption to, to even go to remote learning, I, I believe. So they've been doing a, a good job of maintaining staffing levels to keep, to keep the students in, in school learning.
Awesome. That's, that's actually, A, I didn't know that the state had done that, and B, this is great to know that, again, you know, everybody's working together to try to get these situations and continue to mitigate everything that's been going on for now two years. It hurts to say that. So, thank you, Norm.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Kotula?
Good afternoon, Norm. Congratulations on the vice chair.
Thank you.
My question was about the transportation manager there. One that was there recently, well, not recently, but had left towards the end of the last school year. Have they replaced that, that position?
Yes, we have a new transportation manager. In fact, for a while there, he was driving buses to make up for the personnel shortages that we had. He's no longer having to do that. He's able to concentrate on what his job actually is, fortunately.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Mr. George?
Norm, do you see any, for the unexpendable funds account, do you see any maintenance projects that could fall into that coming up right now? Like I read for tomorrow night's sign about a roof, I believe it's at KCS. Do you see any other facilities, things that could fall under using those funds?
There's always maintenance issues, you know, that.
I understand that.
No, I, I'm, I'm not trying to be facetious. I'm just, I don't, I don't know anything, nothing comes to the top of, I mean, it.
So nothing's been brought to you guys yet?
No, not for something that would fall under funding like that.
Okay.
Major capital projects have been brought up.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barclay?
I, I gave you the two, an example of the BOE budget and its transparency for the Hartford Public Schools. So we'd like to meet as soon as possible. And so would you bring that information forward to Mr. Angeli? Because we brought that up when, February or March of last year, about transparency of where the BOE finances are.
Yeah. At this point, we could add it to the agenda for the next meeting, but our, our, our next meeting is tomorrow. I can mention to, you know, I can mention it to him and show him what we have for right now, but to actually get it on the agenda, would have to wait till the following meeting at this point.
Does it need to be an agenda item to have a meeting between the BOE and, yes, the two fiscal subcommittees?
I'll address this. I did bring it up at the last BOE meeting I attended. And as I've spoken with Ms. Calorio, she's also spoken to the superintendent, Mr. Angeli, the fiscal subcommittees of the town council and the Board of Ed would have to have a joint meeting to go over any possible format changes to the budget that the town council would like to see. When it was brought up during the meeting, I believe Ms. Abrams is on the fiscal subcommittee, and there was question of.
They had not yet created who was on what committees.
Okay.
So.
Because she wasn't going to be back yet.
Right. But the, the chairman of the, they were newly organizing. So they were organizing that night. They were, they had not, they did not appoint their liaisons. I only got that information last week.
Okay.
So I, Ms. Jolly was going to be getting it out to all the members of the Board of Ed. And at that point, I was going to reach out to Ange, Mr. Angeli this week to determine if she, he's got an established fiscal subcommittee, and then we could look at dates.
Okay.
So that's just happened within the last week.
Okay.
And I, I forgot to mention that, which is me bad. Yeah, we did appoint all new subcommittee members. So I'm, I, my subcommittees that I'm personally on have changed. I'm off of those, and I'm on new ones, including I'm on fiscal and I'm on personnel as well.
Thank you. Mr. Whitehead and Ms. Wakefield, any comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Whitehead.
Tough to hear you, but question for you. Is it accurate that Mr. Angeline said that the tested stay is not an option for Killenley at this time?
That's correct.
Did he, do you have any data that he provided to, to come up with that conclusion? Because I know Rhode Island is pretty much in the same situation we are. And they're, they're actually taking it a step further where the, the children that are possibly testing positive or in contact with, with positive cases, if they are, if they are asymptomatic, they are keeping them in school, in some schools. And, you know, let's face it, if you're in school learning, that's, that's the best for the kids. I'm just curious what data he's using to, to come up with that conclusion.
He did provide data at the meeting for that. And, but some of, you know, I mean, some of that data is interpretive, and it's subject, it's subject to interpretation as to, you know, the, the person reviewing it. And I, I guess you could argue that both ways. His determination was that for now, we weren't going to utilize it. I don't know if that's changed. That might have changed at this point. I, I'm not sure. But I think, you know, the current wave of the, the Omicron variant and how quickly it spread was, you know, factored into his decision. I don't want to speak for him, but that, you know, the, the rapid rate of infection, I think, was, was giving them pause. Also, he did have the data on the exact numbers, and our numbers did not meet the requirements for, to utilize that program, at least at that point in time. But that, you know, that situation can change very quickly, and, you know, they're expecting this wave to pass. You know, hopefully we'll see a slowdown sooner rather than later, and maybe we can review that policy, or maybe he can review it, and we can review it at, at a, at a future meeting and, and get that policy in play. Because everyone agrees that the in-person learning is absolutely the way that we need to go if, unless it's absolutely prohibitive. is absolutely the way that we need to go if, unless it's absolutely prohibitive health-wise.
I don't know if it's cross-contamination or whatever have you. But it'd be interesting to see the data that he's basing his decision off of. I don't know if we're privy to that.
I can ask Mr. Angeli to forward it to me and I can forward it on to the rest of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I do, I do have, let me, let me just look at this quickly, cause it was on the agenda and some of what he covered is on here. No, it just, it just basically what I've already stated, there's no data contained on this.
Okay.
Agenda. Thank you. Ms. Wakefield, any comments? Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Grandelsky?
I think this was a great experience tonight. It's been a long, long time since we had a liaison and I think it's been a good banter back and forth. You know, and I think that's what we need and I think this is all positive, this is a positive link that we're working, we're working together.
Right, yeah. We need to keep the communication.
Thank you.
I would just like to add one thing. I don't know if this is something that Killingley's looked into, but I know Town of Mottville was having a situation very similar to what we were, where they were struggling to have bus drivers. Um, one thing that's actually in the employees contract for the bus mechanics in Mottville is if there is a shortage of bus drivers, they actually have the mechanics go out driving the buses, picking up kids and dropping off kids. I don't know if that's something we've ever looked into, doing the possibility of where in a pinch, if we need one extra driver, um, we're not worrying about, because I know it was talked about at the last meeting, that there were times where there were routes where we weren't even sending buses out when students were having to stay at home. I don't know if that's something we can look into, if it's at all feasible or not.
Um, I, you know, I think they did a great job of looking at every option. I mean, I, I don't specifically remember that being mentioned in a meeting, but I think it, it, it might have been, but you know, they, they, they combined routes, they did everything possible. It's just that, you know, there was a couple of points there where we got hit with COVID infections and, and, and just quarantines with people that had to be on quarantine. You can't put, you know, people that were exposed on a bus with a bunch of kids. So, um, yeah, it, it was unfortunately unavoidable at that point, but you know, hopefully this will continue. We're, you know, we're increasing staffing levels as much as we can to try to get a little bit of a, a buffer there. So we're not always just barely covering. And the situation is much better now than it was a few weeks ago.
Glad to hear that. Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, thank you very much for coming. We, we appreciate all your input.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is reports from liaisons, 11B Borough Council Liaison. Ms. LaBerge, if you could come forward, please.
Good evening. So Michelle, I have an answer for you on the website. It is quite expensive to have it done. It's something we cannot do. We have no funds in our budget this year to do it. So it's something we'll probably look into next year. So the president and our administrative clerk is going to start working on the ARPA application funds and we're thinking of hiring a consultant for the process since we don't have the personnel that, that the town does. And the suggestion was to check with NICOG and the funding that we receive can be used to hire a consultant. The con, I talked to you about work on the south side of the firehouse and because material delays, the wrap probably couldn't be done until next month if the material showed up. So it looks like probably the wrapping of the window casings and the painting won't be done until spring. And our IT technology policies and procedures subcommittee has met. They are reviewing procedures and policies from other municipalities. They're gonna review them, pick out the ones that fit the borough the best and then come back to the council with that, with that list for the council to vote on. And we also checked with the state to see if the timeline had changed, if we do end up reviewing our charter. And so we, we have that and for us, we would put the questions on our election ballot in May of 2023 so there wouldn't be a separate election. And that's my report.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy, you had a comment?
Yeah, I was gonna comment, but if you could just reach out to me, cause I don't, I can never find you. You know what I mean? And at exchange contact information, I've got some ideas for you.
Okay, well, your information's probably on the town website?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll just go through there.
I've been looking, looking. I can't find you. Thanks.
You can probably ask Jean. I think the town still has my phone number and email.
Any further comments, questions from council? Mr. Whitehead or Ms. Wakefield?
No.
Oh, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is 12A, Discussion and Acceptance of Monthly Budget Reports. Summit, the summary report on general fund appropriations for town government. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Mr. Wood. Discussion. Mr. Kattul.
Under, it seems I was talking about library fines and whatnot, under for library fines there, now it's showing that there's $4,600 in fines.
That's fines and fees. So that includes copy fees, fax fees and all that kind of stuff. So that doesn't represent truly just fines. Um, so I'll be able to break that out when we are ready to kind of dig into that, into that question and that overall. I believe that the fines portion of that is rather small.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Wood?
Just to go with what Ms. Glorio said, I, I do remember you saying before that the, that portion usually is more use of the photocopier and any other services the library provides there and the, the fees are are not fine, the fines are a very, very small portion there. So. So it'll be interesting to see the numbers when you got them and we're ready to discuss it.
Thank you. Mr. Whitehead or Ms. Wakefield?
No.
It'd be interesting to see the, the cost of the books that aren't returned. Would that be in that as well?
Um, so, um, the cost of the books that are not returned typically when the library receives those, those go in a special revenue fund. So they're not considered a revenue in the general fund because they are used to purchase a replacement book for that item, but I can have that break out separate, cause that's not considered one of the revenues in the general fund.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, all who's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is 12B, Discussion and Acceptance of Monthly Budget Reports. System Object Based on Adjusted Budget for the Board of Education. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Grandelsky. Discussion or comments? Seeing none, all who's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to item 13A, Correspondence Communications and Reports, Town Manager's Report. Ms. Gloria, if you could go over this, please.
Sure, Mary. Gloria, Town Manager. So I gave you the update on where COVID is. The case is broken out by county, really focused on hospitalizations. You'll notice that from January 3rd to the year, the month over month comparisons, there's substantial increase in the number in the counts of hospitalizations. Not so much of an increase within Wyndham County. It's fairly flat. So we're not seeing a huge spike in hospitalization cases in Wyndham County, while that fluctuates on a daily basis. Um, we, um, looking from month over month with regards to Killingley specific, we did see a fairly significant increase in confirmed positive cases of COVID. Um, and we unfortunately have experienced an additional four deaths related to COVID within the town. Um, on average, I did include for you the chart that I've been doing, the daily change chart that really encompasses an entire year from January 1st to January 3rd of all of 2021. And you'll note that we are seeing that, once again, that spike over the winter, you know, the winter time spike over just post-holiday. We anticipate that that will begin to subside over the next few weeks. But you'll see that even at this point, our case counts are not as high as what they were even last January. You'll note that there's a couple of days that you, a couple, a couple of points as throughout the year that have significantly higher spikes and those are typically weekend counts. So those typically are counting for three days worth of activity as opposed to just one. We only, we don't receive counts every single day. We kind of receive the weekend counts over in one fell swoop. Killingley, we're continuing to average about 8.5 daily ca, uh, new daily cases within town, which isn't a significant shift from last month. So, um, I think we're seeing a lot more of asymptomatic people that are testing positive that don't necessarily have symptoms. But, um, there are plenty out there that are having significant symptoms. So we've not changed any protocol or any operations within the town as far as town procedures. I do continue to remind staff to make sure that they are sanitizing their areas appropriately, appropriately social distancing. If we have staff that, um, test positive, we are following the new CDC guidelines of five-day quarantine, five-day strict mask wearing. So we are following that protocol. And we have not had any significant COVID impact on any one of our departments. While we've had employees impacted, we have not had any major impact to a single department. I did incorporate the year, the month over month change with regards to vaccination percentages and you'll note, you'll see those. Um, we continue to increase the number of individuals that are fully vaccinated in all categories. Um, I reviewed for you the distribution of the home test kits that we received. So the town, we received our first allotment of home test kits on Saturday night on the first. Um, we received, National Guard came out and distributed. I scheduled and we performed our distribution, our public distribution of those kits on Wednesday, um, January 5th. We had, um, 28 or so cases. So we had about 1,200 or so kits for us to be able to distribute to the public. The event was publicized to start at 6:00 PM and end at 8:30 PM. We were doing it here at the town hall in the rear parking lot. Um, what I did was I had our staff and we've had our staff and all of our neighboring people that utilize our parking lot, we had everyone vacate the rear parking lot by 2:00 PM. Um, we blocked it off. I had law enforcement securing the parking lot. So we didn't have anybody stacking up or piling up within the parking lot. And we didn't allow them to park on the road to form any lines early on. Um, we had them keep moving. Um, so we weren't blocking or clogging up downtown um, in any of our streets on the, in immediately affected area to remove congestion. Um, we were pretty well set up by, a little after four o'clock within the parking lot and all of our volunteers were ready. And we were seeing a fairly steady flow of those individuals that were circling, waiting for the opportunity to be able to begin forming a line. So in an effort to not, to, to continue to have traffic flowing and to not have a bottleneck of people just sitting in line waiting for six o'clock, I opened the gates at 4:30 and we began distribution at 4:30. We distributed from 4:30 to 8:30 and we ended the night with still 11 boxes of kits left. So we had a little over almost 500 kits remaining by the end of, by the end of the evening. Most of the evening, it was no lines, no waiting. I, I think the average wait time in line was five minutes. Um, our, we had individuals stationed on the roadway to check IDs to verify residency. If they didn't have verified residency, they weren't allowed into the parking lot. We did not have very many that, um, that had to be moved through the, on the roadway side and not brought in through the distribution. And we've had four volunteers, four of us were, were set up to be able to, um, you know, distribute to the cars. We didn't have anybody really waiting through that process either. So it was very successful. During our distribution, we were communicating to Winnie and our social media platforms to remind people to come out. Um, and you know, as we, as we had lulls in um, traffic coming in, we would make sure we pushed out, you know, remember to come out. Um, so we thought it was very successful. With the remaining kits, we, I, um, we distributed to our first responders. So KB and all of our fire departments received home test kits. We increased our distribution to our elderly housing complexes because they've been hit fairly hard recently with COVID. So we increased our distribution to them as well. I did distribute kits to each employee. Most, all of our employees have been at work during their own personal town's distribution. Um, and so I felt it only fair that they also get an opportunity for a home test kit. So we distributed to all of our town employees. Um, we have also, we're distributing to NEPS, Northeast Placement Services. Um, they're a vulnerable population and we're identifying vulnerable population for continued distribution. Um, we did receive another, another distribution. We got our, our second distribution, um, and we did get about 1,300 kits in that distribution. We received those that, the very next day, Thursday, go figure. It was great timing by the state. Um, so we received those on Thursday. Um, I have reached out to, we're trying to continue to reach vulnerable population. We are trying to connect with our home daycares because that is an area of significant impact is our home daycare. So we're trying to identify home daycares for distribution. Um, and, um, some of our, in our businesses around town where we've been, I, I've been looking to distribute to the businesses because there's been a number that have been impacted by production and that has a domino effect by not being able to have their shifts filled. So um, we're trying to help mitigate some of those factors within our, um, within our businesses. Um, I did make the announcement to Kate at our, at the last KBA meeting, Killingley Business Association meeting, that any of our businesses that are in need of home test kits to reach out and contact me. Um, I've had a couple of, couple do that. And, uh, so we're almost through distributing the remainder of the kits that we've received. There is still a few left. Um, I will say that we did have set aside a reserve sum last week that we were distributing for those that just couldn't make it to the first distribution. And so we did distribute some here from the town hall to the general public. Um, and we were very cautious in that, in that when people called, we would ask them if they were symptomatic. If they were symptomatic, we met them in the parking lot. We didn't have them come into the building. Um, I didn't wanna, you know, bring it into the building. Um, we have since discontinued that process as we continue to try and fill the requests to the vulnerable populations and to our businesses at this point in time. Um, and I don't foresee that we're gonna do another mass distribution because I think that we will have fully distributed the remaining kits probably by the end of this week. So I think that we did a really good job with trying to hit really every quadrant of the town in population and, um, and businesses with providing some level of home test kits to anyone who, you know, potentially needed it. Um, so that was the home test kit distribution and I, we have not heard anything from the state about having another round of distribution yet. So, um, So that's still up in the air. We still, we did receive a large distribution of N95, KN95 masks that we have. So we do have those, and can we, we are also offering those for distribution to our businesses and to anyone who might need those. But I'm not necessarily looking at doing a mass, you know, a drive-through distribution for N95 masks. But we do have them here, and they're, they'll be great for staff as well as, you know, recreation can use them for any of their events as well. We held our employee luncheon on December 16th. This is an annual employee luncheon, and I, we did hold this within the, the three individual buildings. So we, simply because there was, there's not really a gathering place large enough in town that everyone felt comfortable being able to really spread out and distance well enough. So I wanted to be respectful of the employees' concerns, and so we held the luncheons. So each building got, received catered food in a buffet-style format. But it gives us an opportunity to recognize those long-serving and the years of service from our employees, and I just want to highlight these because, you know, this shows the dedication and the longevity and the commitment of our staff. Joe Boguslawski, Boguslawski is 15 years. Tracy Bragg is 15 years. Paul Brown at 15 years. Elizabeth Wilson, 15 years. Matt Salsi, 20 years. Allison Wiston, 20 years. Tristan, and I always mess up her last name, Mizowski is 25 years. Christine Fitzsimmons, 35 years. And Diane Gerton at 40 years. So, you know, we, and we have a lot of staff that they've, you know, they've been here for their careers. This hasn't just been a stopover. This has been a career for them, and they've been dedicated, and they show that dedication and commitment to this community every day, all day long. So I just want to applaud them for that, for that, for those years of service. I gave you a brief update on some of the economic developments. So Black Pond Brews, some of you were able to attend that ribbon cutting. It was a great event, really great new location, very excited to see them in their new location and get them, and get them open, and wish them much success. If you haven't had an opportunity to stop by, KNA, NK Asian Market, they're now in the former Busket Appliance Building. It's a really great expansion to that, so they moved from, you know, kind of the corner of Dyer Street. So they're now open and really excited about their expansion, so definitely go check that one out. The Economic Development Commission received a presentation, which I had attached from Wendy Burry from the cultural coal, from, of the Cultural Coalition on how to create a cultural district. And this is really about, you know, is that something that the Economic Development Commission really wants to pursue in designating an area of Killingley as a cultural district? It does give an opportunity for the town to seek additional funding, to really kind of fold in additional arts and culture within the community. And it's a more dynamic commission than just the Economic Development Commission. It really needs to be a subset. And it goes through, what are all those requirements? So it was a really well-rounded presentation. I believe I included that presentation in there. But I, the economic development is now going to have further discussions on the direction and path they are looking to go with that. And then just to give you some grant updates, the Historical Society was very successful in being awarded a $5,300 grant from the Connecticut Humanities Organization for Technology Improvements. They were our economic development director. Jill St. Clair worked with them on getting that grant submitted, so congratulations to the Historical Society for that. They're going to be purchasing some new equipment to digitize some of their collections. So it'll help make things more public-facing for them. So that's a really great opportunity. On the town side, we're submitting two applications under the Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant. So one of them is placemaking grant, really to, that dovetails with the project that Economic Development Commission is looking at on the municipal parking lot side of, behind, at the, at the school street parking lots over by the courthouse. They're looking at, they have a, they have a consultant working on reimagining some of those spaces to make placemaking spaces. So we're looking at putting in a grant for that. That one's about a million dollars. And the other grant that I think fits well into the focus of this program is for the community center, the renovations at Westfield Avenue for the community center. So the Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant Program is very competitive grant, but it's focused on improving livability, vibrancy, convenience, and appeal of communities throughout the state. It's being administered through the Connecticut DECD, Department of Economic Development, and they're awarding between 20 and 50 million dollars statewide. And the grant sizes are between 1 million and 10 million. So if you think about that, if they're only going to award 20 million dollars, my grant asked for this is 9.5 million for the community center. And the placemaking grant request is a million. So that 20 to 50 million dollars does not go very far across the entire state, so it is very competitive. And I think we've made a really good case. Jill and I were working on that grant. It's due on this Friday. I'll be submitting that hopefully Thursday night to, for consideration. We did already submit our, our intent to submit, so that's already been in place. But I think that both projects, the Westfield Avenue project, because it's shovel-ready, those are the projects that they're looking for shovel-ready. So I'm hoping that we will have, get at least a good look on this. The state could have already decided where they're going to spend the money, but they did indicate that it, there appears to be a round two. So this is designated as round one, so it may queue us up for a round two possibility. So I, you know, even putting this in at this point in time with such high competition, I, I don't think, I think it's a good opportunity for us to do that, and even if we're not awarded on this time around, I think it gives us high potential for award in a future round. So that's definitely been something that we've had to roll up our sleeves on. Jill has spent a fair amount of time working on both of those grant applications with me. So that's kind of rounds out my reports. If anybody has any questions?
Mr. Wood?
Just a quick question for you. I know you mentioned the N95 masks there. Are they N95 or KN95? Because there is a difference.
There is a difference, and I believe they're KN95. When I've talked to Randy Burchard around this, he said that they were missing one level of stamp of approval for them to be truly official N95s.
Correct. It's NIOSH standards.
Yes.
That are required, and so that's why I ask.
So the boxes on the outside say N95, but I don't believe that they have that certification. So I think they're truly KN95s.
KN95s. I know for us, we've been given the guidance from the state to say, use KN95s like you would a regular surgical mask versus a true N95 that meets NIOSH standards as a true N95. So there's a difference there. That's why I ask.
I will say they are very form-fitting and tight to the face.
Yes, depending on the ones, yes.
Any other comments, questions?
And if I can, I want to thank Tammy Wakefield as well as Randy Burchard, Paul Gazola, Maureen Hayes, Becky Duquette, Jonathan Blake, and our law enforcement team for putting together and, and organizing and, and doing the distribution for the COVID-19 kits. It was very quickly put together, but they ran that fantastically. So just a huge credit and thanks to all of them that just, literally just jumped right in there and helped us get it done and made sure, Jonathan, that we didn't get run over.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that the distribution went well. I just do have one question. As far as applications that have come into the town for distribution of the COVID grant money, how many applications have we had so far?
Are we talking about the ARPA funds?
Yes, the ARPA.
So the ARPA funds, I want to say we've had, off the top of my head, I think we have about 12 or 13 that have come in to the town. I'll be putting that package together for presentation to the fiscal subcommittee of the town council. So those that are, and I don't recall which one of you guys are on the fiscal subcommittee, I'll be reaching out to you over this week to try and coordinate what is the best date and times for a meeting, so then we can get something scheduled to begin the review of those ARPA fund applications.
Thank you. I don't know if you saw the email that I forwarded to you today.
Yeah, that, that's not ARPA funds.
Okay.
That's CARES Act funding. That's different.
Okay.
That's a, that was what was distributed.
Previously.
Previously, last year, and Jennifer Hawkins, our finance director, is the custodian of those records. So I forwarded on to, on to her. She's currently out right now. She will respond to that when she's returned to work.
Okay, thank you. As far as the fiscal subcommittee, I believe it's myself, Ms. Barclay, Mr. Wood, and I believe Mr. Kertula is the alternate on the fiscal subcommittee.
Yeah, I was going to look it up and email you guys tomorrow. I just don't have the list in front of me right now.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments?
Yes. I got a question with the mask and the test kits. Were those supposed to be earmarked for the residents?
So they were supposed to be distributed among the communities. They were actually, we were, we were given direct or suggestions by the state as well as the Department of Health to not limit it to residents. That everyone's in this together, make sure that you distribute it to everyone and anyone who needs a test kit. But that was guidance most, almost all the towns locally that did mass distributions, limited their mass distributions to residents only, just as a way to manage the mass distribution because we all had limited supply. But the actual distribution was not, was always given as guidance from the state and the health department to distribute it broadly across the community.
It just seems that we didn't, no, did we offer the masks at the time we gave out the kits? No, right?
Yes, no, we did. Everyone received two, two masks with the kit, so they had like a little bundle that was given to them.
Awesome. I was just, I was just going the way of, if we didn't hand out the mask with the kit and we kept them for the town employees, it kind of, if I was, you know, on the outside looking in, I would think that, you know, it's the town trying to offset the cost of buying in a N95 mask, you know what I mean? So if you sent them out, I think the, the distribution, from what I heard, was, was phenomenal, so great job on that.
Thank you. Ms. Wakefield, do you have any comments?
Not at this time.
Any further comments? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Gloria. We'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is 13B memo from Board of Ed, use of non-lapsing funds. Ms. Gloria, can you go over this, please?
Yeah, this is just a notification to the town council and in accordance with the MOU that the town has with the Board of Education regarding the use of non-lapsing funds. The town doesn't, town council doesn't need to necessarily take action on this because the legisla, the legislation that created the non-lapsing fund does not allow the town council to reject or, or prevent expenditure, but it does give you the notification of what they're utilizing the funds for. So this is just the communication for that.
Thank you. And for those, those at home that are listening, the funds were, it was $100,000 that were used for repairs of the elevator at the Westfield Avenue building. This is an item that had come up during two previous Board of Ed meetings that I was liaisoned to. And at the last Board of Ed meeting, as the liaison from the Board of Ed had said, the Board of Ed did agree to cover the maintenance costs on that elevator. Any questions, comments from council? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is Item 14A, unfinished business for Town Council action, appointment of town attorney. This item was tabled at our last regular meeting until today, January 11, 2022. Can I get a motion to adopt this resolution to appoint the town attorney?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandalsky, seconded by Mr. Wood. I will open up for discussion, comments.
If I may?
Yes, please.
Mary Colorio said the resolution before you is to essentially reappoint Halleran Sage as the town attorney. The town has utilized Halleran and Sage as the town attorney for the last two years. I did provide you a detailed schedule of all the town, all the attorney's fees that the town has paid. And you will note that back in 1617, the town was, the town had transitioned. We had Attorney Saintage as our town attorney. He gave notice and retired. Good for you, Bill. So the town at that, all, all the towns on the northeast corner, essentially, we all had to go out for bid for a town attorney because he was like the town attorney for almost all of us. So we, the town went out to bid at the time. They did select in that process Martha Colina, and they had entered into a fee arrangement with a retainer cost, which you see the breakout below of Martha Colina's retainer, and then what was considered other matters. So anything that was considered litigation was not included in the retainer fee. It was, it was separately billed outside of the retainer fee. And then you will note that through that time period, you will still see that the town, the town was still utilizing Halleran and Sage as an attorney. So we had been utilizing them when, under Saintage, we were utilizing them for labor. They were our labor attorney, so they represented us at any union negotiations, and they handled any of our grievance matters and stuff like that. When we transitioned over to Martha Colina, they have labor attorney in, in, with their services. However, under Martha Colina, the town had a number of conflicts with cases. And so when Martha had a conflict, the town still needed representation, and we utilized Halleran and Sage in those situations. Two years ago, the town, the, I recommended that the council revisit, looking at legal, the legal firm at the time because of the number of conflicts that we'd been having in our fee structure. I don't know what, I didn't believe was overall beneficial to the town. And so at that point in time, the town did do another RFP for legal services in which we transferred to Halleran and Sage. I will say it's not average, it's not typical that the town transitions legal services this frequently. There is a heavy lift when you're transitioning legal cases. And I have, you know, talked to all of my staff that has direct conversation and in, and direct communication with Halleran and Sage to determine how their performance has been over the last two years. They've been, and the response I got from staff, and my experience as well, has been Halleran and Sage has been very responsive to all of the staff's requests and concerns. They've been readily available to attend meetings, both virtually and in person. And they, we have not, we have not had any, I think we've only had one conflict on a case, on a tax appeal case, and that was it. Everything else, we've been able to manage fully, completely with Halleran and Sage. What you'll notice, Martha Colina still has fees. I left one case with Martha, Martha Colina when we transitioned. I left the Davco case because we thought we were getting to the finalization of the Davco case, and it didn't make sense to transition such a, such a very detailed file and case to a new attorney, when we really thought that we were going to be getting to a finalized judgment on that case. And that case has continued to drag on. We are in the process of going and finalizing to get to trial at this point in time. So instead of just doing status updates with the judge, we are going to be going to trial, and which is another reason why I have not transitioned that one to Halleran and Sage. I have left that one with Martha Colina because of the, the significant details and historical information on that file. I think it's just in the town's best interest to maintain that with Martha Colina through the end. But all of our other cases have Um, but all of our other cases have transitioned successfully and well to Haller and Sage. So my recommendation to the town council is to reappoint Haller and Sage as the town's, town's attorney.
Mr. Chair, just as a clarification, the DAVCO case is the building for DAVCO meeting at the end of the day.
You are correct.
The people listening in, they have no idea what that is.
You're right, it's 11 Maple Street, it's the corner's building.
Talk to me, why is that dragging on, but this is appropriate.
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will open up for questions, comments, discussion. Mr. Wood?
Honestly, I, uh, again, was, I think our last meet, last regular meeting, Rich Roberts came out, did a phenomenal job answering any questions we had. Um, I, you know, having now been able to meet both Martha Colina and, and Haller and Sage folks, um, both of them I think are very well qualified, but it makes no sense to me, in all honesty, to keep flip-flopping and having expenses, uh, with trying to transition from one, one attorney to another. Um, as, uh, I know Mary had said in the last meeting, uh, usually an RFP is every few, every five years or so, five, 10, if not a little longer than that. Um, so, just to save, save a couple pennies, I'm, I'm happy with keeping them.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I also just wanted to let everyone know, I forgot to mention this, that, um, Haller and Sage has also done a number of trainings for our boards and commissions, as well as offered, uh, trainings to staff as well, and that's all, um, we don't get charged for that, we don't get additional, um, uh, fees for that.
Um, if I remember correctly, that is something that was brought up during the interview process, um, not just, uh, two years ago, but also two years prior to that when Martha Colina was chosen, um, that was something that Martha Colina had offered as well. Um, I believe at that time, all the attorney's firms that interviewed, uh, four years ago, that was something that all of them had agreed to do. Um, I do have, uh, a couple of questions, cause I'm looking at the breakdown on some of these. I know that, um, the transition from Attorney Saint Ang to Martha Colina started, um, early 2018. Um, looking at the breakdown, cause I see Martha Colina was a hundred thousand dollars, um, and then if you go down to where, uh, it, it's broken down to just Martha Colina, um, you've got the breakdown of 36,000, and then the 64,300. Now, that one case, the DAVCO case that you referred to, do you know how much of the fees we got for other matters were for that specific case?
So I don't have it broken out specifically here, and I can get you those numbers, but I will say that, so the town received a judgment in 2020 for prior legal fees that encompassed essentially two years, and that was 54,000, so I'm gonna say that of that 64,000, probably about 20,000, maybe a little less, was DAVCO, was that, was that specific case, but I would have to go and pull the exact numbers, cause I don't have that here on the spreadsheet.
Okay. Um, I was just, just trying to compare, um, the, what cost savings there were, cause I did look at the 2020 to 2021, um, it was slightly higher than, um, the 18 to 19. Um, so I wasn't sure how much of that had to do with the, uh, the DAVCO case.
For Martha Colina?
Um, yes, cause that, there was 72,000.
Mm-hmm.
In 2021, 2020 to 2021.
Right, and that's essentially all DAVCO, that's all that one case essentially.
Okay. So hopefully when that case is settled, we can see substantial savings on.
Right, cause you'll note that for general legal fees, um, our general legal fees were only 46,000.
Okay.
And that, that's for Haller and Sage.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
Mary, do they have a trial date?
No, they're still deposing witnesses.
What is the actual value of the property?
Due to the fact that this is an open case, I.
I can't, I can't comment any further on the case, but, um, it, it's just in the, we're, yeah, we're still waiting for, um, for dates.
Thank you. So I will read the resolution, um, the item is consideration and action on a resolution to appoint a town attorney. Um, this item is to consider appointing a town attorney in accordance with section 902 of the town charter. Per recent changes to the section, the town attorney must be appointed no later than the 15th day of February following each biennial town election. This item will appear on agendas until action is taken. Um, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Move the question?
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now move on in the agenda. The next item up is 15A, consideration and action on a resolution, resolution setting the date and time for the town council goal-setting session. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
I wouldn't have an emotion yet, because we don't have date, time, and location set in there, so this was really to begin the discussion of what date and time, and then ultimately, location as well. Um, so, in years past, um, the town council has held goal-setting sessions in different locations other than just here in this room, um, and have used it, it's always open to the public, but have used it as an opportunity to kind of be in a different setting, to, um, you know, um, just make it, um, a little bit more free flow of, uh, comments and interaction, um, more like a workshop, and less like an actual council meeting. Um, so, just as an option, again, if it, if it is located outside of this room, it's not, it wouldn't be televised or, or livestreamed, but, um, in years past, we've, um, also done it in other places where, you know, before we, when we only used channel 22, it wasn't put on channel 22 either. Um, and it really, I think, afforded the council members, especially new members, to really be able to have an opportunity to voice, um, you know, what was, what they thought their goals or, or initiatives might be. So, just to give, um, some options or some discussion for the council to consider, um, we could definitely still hold it here, um, as an option, um, the community center is always an option, or I could look for an alternate space, um, in, in, you know, in another place, so, just wanted to get the feel of the council on this.
Uh, yes, the previous two that I've been a part of, um, were both here, in, in the town meeting room. Um, one thing I will say, if we're gonna hold it in a different location, I would not want to have it in any smaller of a venue than this.
Correct.
Um, especially considering with the, how high the case count is in a community with COVID. Um, I would like to have it televised, um, due to the fact of, with, with the COVID transmissions and case counts where they're at right now, if there are people that don't feel comfortable coming, I would want them to be able to at least listen to what's going on. I know that wouldn't give them an opportunity, um, if we do have public comment during the goal-setting meeting, it wouldn't give them an opportunity to speak, but at least they can listen to what's going on, and be aware of, um, where the council wants to see this town going. Um, as far as a date and time, um, I know during the week, um, this, I know from past experience, this meeting can get pretty long, um, if it were to be held during the week, uh, we could be running into the meeting being very late. Um, I would prefer, uh, to have it on a weekend, as we have the past, uh, two that we've had, were both on Saturday mornings, um, as I believe that would allow the majority of the council to be able to attend, um, and also be in a manner where we haven't worked all day and your mind is a little more free to bounce around different ideas. That being said, um, since this is an open discussion, if we were to have the meeting either the 22nd or 29th, um, if we want to set a date and time, um, or if we wanted to do the, exactly, the 23rd or the 30th, so either the 22nd or 23rd, or 29th or 30th, um, if it were on a Sunday, I would definitely like to do, um, early afternoon, so any council members who do want to attend church, it wouldn't conflict with that.
I would prefer early afternoon, on a Sunday.
Sunday afternoon.
Only the fact that we have the shop open on the weekends.
Okay, and you said you work on the 29th and 30th?
Being a new member, I'd like to attend.
Oh, 22nd, 23rd, so you'd be available 29th or 30th?
So, open discussion, my opinion is, uh, I prefer it not televised, the last two I've been to, there's been no public participation, and whatever, we always have a release to Winnie or whatever, what our top five to seven goals are that we would like to try to achieve, so that gets out to the public in that form, and then it's more of a relaxed, a more relaxed, free-flowing workshop, as Mary said, where, uh, you don't feel like you're, you know, if you say something, it's just more relaxed, and it's, and like I say, it all ends up getting out to Winnie in a news thing, uh, so as far as, I think it'd be more comfortable if it wasn't televised, if people want to come, that's fine, but, uh, we typically haven't done it that way in the last couple of years, that's my opinion.
Okay. Um, what would be the possibility if we're not gonna do televised? We could possibly use like the high school auditorium, to where if people did want to come, they can at least space out further?
I would probably look to utilize the community center, um, auditorium.
Okay.
Um, you could still space out there, um, and probably meet the, the number of people that might want to come out and watch, um, in that environment. Um, I'd have to check availability, um, on either of those days, but I'm thinking off the top of my head, we might be able to accommodate, but that's where I would, um...
If we have a cold spell like we're having right now, will the HVAC system there have the room warm enough so we don't get frostbite?
So the heat tends to work in the, in the auditorium.
Okay.
It's the cooling system that doesn't work, so we wouldn't want to do it in August, but, um, yeah, so, typically the theater has heat.
Okay.
You know, I, uh, I'm going to some meetings over there at some of the, I guess you call the classrooms, where the, they have the ceiling mounted heaters there, and you can't hear who's talking, it's.
Right, yeah, the theater's not quite like that with, with the heat, but, um, you know, we could, we could look to do it there, um, and if it ends up being that it's not available, we can always, right, we can change the location without having to have the council take a new separate action on that.
Okay. All right, so, Ulo, you said the 22nd, 23rd, you're available?
No.
Or, excuse me, other way around, 20, 29th and 30th, you are available. All right, um, Patty, days you'd be available of those four?
Uh, 29th and 30th.
Okay. All right, Mr. Kertula, 29th and 30th work for, either one of those days work for you?
The 30th would work, I wouldn't have to take off of work.
Okay. Mr. Wood?
Any day you want.
Ms. Murphy?
Yeah.
Mr. Grandalsky?
29th and 30th.
Ms. Wakefield?
Uh, if it's gonna be the Sunday, I would definitely appreciate if it's in the afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Whitehead, so you had said, um, Sunday afternoons would be best for you, would the 30th work?
Yes, it would.
Okay, all right, so the consensus I'm seeing would be, uh, best option would be the 30th in the afternoon. Um, Ms. Wakefield, what time would work for you, seeing how you're the, you had, uh, expressed wanting to have it in the afternoon?
Uh, well, I, I'm usually home from church by noon time, so.
Okay. Um, and Mr. Whitehead, what time would you be available on that Sunday?
I'll make it work, whatever.
Okay.
I, I'll, I'll get somebody to cover me.
Okay, so if we did, let's say, 2:00 PM, um, how does that sound for everyone? Any, any objections to that? Okay, so we're looking at Sunday, the 30th at 2:00 PM, and as far as the location, um, I know a couple of different options have been talked about. Um, uh, Ms. Barclay, do you have a preference, whether community center or here? Okay. Uh, Ms. George? Mr. Kertula?
I'd prefer here, but I'm, you know, it's okay.
Mr. Wood?
I'm with Mr. Kertula, I'd prefer here, but either or works for me.
No preference.
Mr. Grandalsky?
Here or, prefer here, but, though, but it's okay.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Wakefield?
Um, hav- having had meetings in the, in the auditorium over there, um, even if, even if the heat is working, it does have a ten, it's pretty drafty in that, in that auditorium, so, um, I would prefer the town hall, I mean, I highly doubt, um, the public will show up, um, but, it'd also be a lot easier to hear everybody in a smaller space than.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Whitehead?
Majority.
Excuse me, what was that?
It doesn't matter to me.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, so it looks like the preference is going to be here. Um, the one question I do want to post to everybody and let everybody, uh, weigh in on is televised or non-televized?
None.
It honestly doesn't matter to me.
No.
Either way.
Ms. Wakefield and Mr. Whitehead, any preference?
None committal.
Okay. All right. Well, um...
I just say that because it wasn't possible, so, I don't know.
Okay, all right. My only thought process on that was, if there were people who, who are uncomfortable coming in person, uh, but looking at the amount of people who showed up, as, as you had stated at the, at the last two, um, if the same amount of people show up again this year, um, there is ample room to socially distance.
But I would put a caveat to that, it's not just about those who show up, um, some people do still, uh, watch of, either through Facebook or channel 22, if they're not on Facebook, things like that, so, honestly, televising isn't a horrible idea, so that we're there, again, they get to see everything that's going on, and, um, you know, th- there's that level of transparency as well of the council, uh, obviously, like we've mentioned, it's gonna get posted on Winnie the next day, but, uh, or that day probably, but, um, you know, again, just gives them that level of, we're not trying to secretly hide something or something like that, we, we really do, uh, we're, we're pretty much an open book, regardless, reach out anytime, feel free, but, um, I, I definitely have zero opinion one way or another on televising, but.
Okay. Um, my understanding is the last, at least the last one, if not the previous two, were not televised, it was only live. Um, so if we were to stay consistent, um, with the way it's been over the past four years, uh, being the last, the last two goal-setting meetings, um, neither one being televised, but being open to the public, um, I would also like to throw in there that we can still receive public comment for that meeting via email, um, or mailing into the town hall as we do public comment, um, for our regular and special town council meetings. That way, it does give them another opportunity to make public comment without having to come in person. Um, so we will go with untelevised, but allow, uh, members of the community to make comments, either coming in person, um, or you can email or, uh, mail through the postal service to the town hall, and just use the, uh, town's website, you can look at all our other town meetings, agendas, and they show you where to email, um, or to... um, or to mail the public comments into. So now that we, so we've got a date being the thirtieth, a time being two PM, and location being here in the town meeting room, um, so our item right now is, uh, resolution setting the date and time for the town council goal-setting session. Um, be it resolved by the town council or the town of Killenly, that the town council will hold a goal-setting session as follows. The date will be January thirtieth. The time will be two PM. The location will be in the town meeting room at the town hall. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Mr. Kattula. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on in the agenda. The next item up is consideration and action on appointing special counsel. The town has engaged with Pullman and Calmly to perform tax sales. This firm has conducted these tax sales on behalf of the town for many years. Illegal fees are not paid by the town. They are included in a tax sale cost paid by the buyer. Can I get a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made by Mr. Kattula.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wood. Uh, Ms. Colorio, could you go over this, please?
The town engages with two additional, what we would call special councils, so these are attorneys that, um, focus on specialty areas. One being our, um, tax sale attorney, so this, uh, Pullman and Calmly we have, uh, contracted with for, um, probably the last couple of decades even. Adam Cohen has been the specialty person, specialty attorney that has run, um, the majority of our tax sales. Um, as it's stated in the item, the town does not pay those legal fees. Those legal fees come out of the actual tax sale itself, so they're paid for by the buyer of that tax sale. Um, and I will say there's not very many other, I don't, the vast majority of towns across the state utilize Adam Cohen for, um, tax sale. It's a very specialty area. Um, has very specific, um, laws and procedures around a tax sale, and he's performed those, um, very well and very professionally. I've attended many of his, uh, tax sales, um, and, and done very well. So the recommendation is to remain with Pullman and Calmly for that. The other, uh, attorney that we contract with is for our bond counsel, so this is specific to bond, uh, the town bonding, borrowing money, and closing on any of those financial transactions. Um, there, the firm that we had been previously using for quite some time was Day Pitney. The staff that we've been using at Day Pitney transitioned to Pullman and Calmly this last year. We remained with that staff, um, for continuity. We have a number of projects that have been years, some decades with the WPCA in the making, and, um, having that continuity of that staff throughout that entire process is been critical in being able to do our financial closing and not incurring additional fees with regards to having to have somebody recreate the back, uh, transaction files on those, on those. So we only pay the bond counsel when we actually close. It's done during the financial transaction. Very similar to what somebody would do when they're closing on a mortgage. Um, you pay your mortgage attorney. This is very, this, you know, if you want to equate it, that's a similar situation. Um, so my recommendation is to rema, is to, um, move forward with Pullman and Calmly, um, for remaining that continuity with that, uh, legal team that we have had over the years that have overseen our debt issuances. Um, uh, Judith Blank was the one that, um, attended some of your meetings when you were discussing the community center, the KMS project and the community center project. Um, she attended those meetings. Um, that's our, that still would remain to be our, um, bond counsel would be Judith Blank.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from council? Mr. Whitehead or Ms. Wakefield?
Oh, sir.
Thank you. Seeing no comments, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is council member reports and comments. Um, Mr. Whitehead, would you like to start? I don't know if you have any, seeing how you're, uh, fairly new.
I have no comment.
Okay.
Keep it easy.
Ms. Wakefield?
Um, EDC, um, I attended that last Tuesday. Um, part of the town manager's, uh, report, um, included, um, a presentation from the representative, um, from the state, uh, we are, the EDC had already, um, paid a consultant who actually, um, had done preliminary drawings for an area, um, for development that would fit perfectly in, um, with that whole cultural district, um, commission thing. It would actually, um, there was, the, we would actually have to create another commission, which I know would be a charter change, or you create a subcommittee in, in an existing commission, which is what most towns do, just because it's, makes it a little easier. Um, the, the composition for these, these cultural district commissions, um, actually include, um, artists as well as business owners and as, as well as community members, so that, um, and basically, it's, it's basically, um, um, like heritage tourism and, and Killenly does, I mean, the reality is, is we, the pieces are all sitting there. I mean, we've got a beautiful historic town, uh, we have historic buildings, uh, and just, it's, it's a way to create a destination, kind of like Putnam did with their antique districts a few, you know, de- decades ago. Um, it would, it would create a place for, um, people to come to Killenly or want to come to Killenly, uh, and it would encourage economic development and growth. Uh, so it, it was actually, um, a very, the two, two presentations that were put together were really, um, were good. Um, hopefully, uh, those grants will come through. Uh, the lady from the state, when she saw the presentation that was put on from, um, what the EDC had already put together, um, she was super excited because basically she told them that they're, they're, um, they're, they're well on their way to creating a historic, or a cultural district commission or wouldn't, having in place what they needed for a cultural district commission in order to get, um, to qualify for those state funds and stuff, so hopefully, um, those grants will come through. Um, but, uh, it, it was, it was a well-run meeting, um, it had, had the two presentations, so it almost, almost ran into the town council space, but, uh, it, it, um, other than that. Um, and I did take part in, I didn't, as Mary mentioned, the, uh, distribution. Uh, we, we were so, so ready for, for lines and people being rude and, and short-tempered, and, and it went so smooth, and it was really nice to see all the positive comments on our social media posts, uh, about, hey, no, no wait, went through really easy. Uh, it, it was well organized and, and I was glad to be able to help with that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Grandelsky?
Uh, the conservation commission, they were, they're working on their, um, con, um, environmental award. They were also working on trails on various, uh, conservation properties, the Litchfield Avenue property along the Quinnam Bog River and Rogers and the Quandok property. And, um, they're pushing staff on the forest, on a forest management plan for the Chase Reservoir property.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy?
With the, uh, pollution commission, uh, I went with Ed and, uh, they basically said they're on budget this month and that was good. Uh, the upgrade seems to be working because their phosphorus was way low and, uh, the numbers look great. Um, they discussed with Frito Lay, a couple of shutdowns, uh, really just information for them. It probably affects their process. Upgrade, basically all they have left is a punch list, that was my understanding. Um, there was a, a proposal on the table to store energy from Titan Energy Battery Storage, and they basically decided no that, uh, the company wanted so much maintenance, wanted them to do so much maintenance that they may have ended up losing money in the deal, so for right now, that's off the table. Uh, Key Bank, I don't really remember what that was.
Uh, Key Bank, uh, they recommended that Key Bank tie into Main Street. They, they sneaked out Key Bank's line going out to Oak Street. But it's confusing. It's so old and whatnot, uh, and to keep pursuing it, it'd be very costly, but they don't know who owns their existing, uh, you know, it's kind of, the town is saying it's Key Bank's lateral all the way as far as they can find out where it is, and then it's blocked, so they recommend putting, they put it, when they did, uh, realign Main Street, they put a stub in Main Street. So Key Bank can go to Main Street, but they would have to put a pump system in.
Okay.
And then, uh, they're up for RFP in January, so that's all I've got, and unless you've got any more. The Key Bank was actually, I thought that was the I and I project, but. So it's, it's better at the collections. I'm better at the plant, so.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
Um, I really have no report, uh, just an aside there to my earlier comments there. Um, just, uh, let the guys know from the Killenly PD, we appreciated them coming out for the services as well.
Thank you. Mr. Kattula?
I'm going through the holidays. I didn't really have any meetings to attend. I was, I was, uh, happy to attend the rivet cutting at Black Pond and present them with their plaque for, uh, from the town. And, uh, I'd like to thank all the town employees at the holiday party that we didn't get to go to, that, uh, for their years of service.
Thank you. Um, I agree, uh, when you see, uh, town staff that have worked here as long as they have, um, they're, they're valuable assets to the town, um, the knowledge, the experience, they, they know their positions inside and out. Um, and it, it says a lot about the work environment here at the town hall as well. Um, if, if it wasn't a great place to work, you wouldn't see employees staying as long as quite a few of our employees have. Um, I did attend the Board of Ed meeting last month. Um, Mr. Farren had touched upon pretty much everything. Um, I did talk, I did bring to them that the fiscal subcommittee of the town council is looking to meet with their fiscal subcommittee, um, to discuss the possible, uh, format change to the, uh, Board of Ed budget when it gets presented, uh, this spring. And I did field questions on the, uh, elevator maintenance at the Westfield Avenue project. Um, and Ms. Colorio did, uh, answer a few questions as well. Um, she was there at the meeting as well, just to clarify a few things. And as Mr. Farren said, they did agree to spend money out of the non-lapsing account for that maintenance. And that's all I have. Ms. George?
And I am the new VOE liaison, starting tomorrow night, and over the holidays, we didn't have any conversation.
Thank you. Ms. Barclay?
The housing authority meeting was canceled because they didn't have a quorum. The planning and zoning meeting, um, oh, that wasn't in December. Oh, yeah, it was December twentieth. Um, so Frito Lay's attorney, um, presented, um, the plans that they came up with. They modified the parking lot, um, and relocated the expansion of the parking lot so that the, the trees and the berm will be left as they are. They are planning on lowering the, um, light poles from twenty-five feet to twenty feet, so there's a less of an impact on the light pollution. Um, they stated that the traffic, um, study that was completed in 2018, um, there was a greater volume of traffic than observed in 2021. So the DOT says the study is sufficient and they don't need to do another one. Um, the expansion project, if approved, is slated to take thirty months. Um, people are, uh, concerned about, um, the traffic, so they said they would be averaging sixty-five construction workers a day, four hundred twenty construction workers on site at peak. And to help mitigate traffic congestion, carpooling and vans will be part of the subcrant, of the subcontract. And they also be directed to use, um, three ninety-five and auto wagon crossing. And if the DOT determines that any, um, improvements need to be made on three ninety-five, these will be the responsibilities of the applicant. And in response to the sound complaints, um, they completed the installation of improvements between, um, October and December of twenty twenty-one, and the sound studies were completed and, um, applicable levels, um, of sound are now what they've done. Um, so they found that the starch recovery system was a dominant sound generator, so they put silencers on the starch recovery system. And during the, the expansion will comply with noise, noise standards also. Um, the sound will be contained within the building and sound wall will be, um, constructed behind the existing plant. And somebody questioned the number of trailers that they have, so the trailers are used for storage to, um, hold up the two point four days of product to optimize time and for their just-in-time production. The, um, automated storage and retrieval system, that's, um, the expansion that they're looking for the variance for. It requires a height of eighty-six feet, eight inches, and that's for the pallet storage. And that has been determined to be the optimal height for storage because they used an eight-tier system. And, um, they said that going up in height is less of an impact on the front community as opposed to going, building, um, out. And there was a question on the forest management plan, um, of twenty-ten, and Frito Lay, um, thought they met the intent of the plan. Um, the railroad, um, expansion eliminated some of the tree buffers, and they said that they would, um, landscape to cover the bare areas, so that was pretty much of the Frito Lay. And, um, the rezoning from the commercial to light industrial on five forty-three War Regan Road and nineteen Lucian Avenue, um, was approved. And seventeen Lucian Avenue is already light industrial, so that'll be the, um, metal and welding fabrication that will occupy the two thousand two hundred square feet of the, um, building, the Old Bennys. And that was it.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is seventeen executive session, and we have nothing for executive session. So item eighteen, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood. I believe it was seconded by Mr. Grandelsky. Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. This meeting is adjourned.